Hey Tom.
Hey Dennis, how are you buddy?
Okay, and we are live.
Evening everyone, welcome to our January 12th, 2022 Planning Board meeting, first of the year. Happy New Year to everyone, a healthy one, let's hope. Um, could we all rise please for our pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America.
America.
To the Republic.
Which is Sam.
Sam. One nation.
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 Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice.
For all. Thank you.
Always such a mishmash.
Sure, Chairman John Curry.
Here.
Vicky Gannon.
Here.
Nancy Garbino.
Here.
Dennis McNamara.
Here.
Jack Mattis.
Here.
Bruce Prince.
Here.
Christopher Zabertow.
Here.
Thank you. Um, first on our agenda is the consideration of our minutes from December 8th, 2021. Any additions, corrections? A- as always, for the record, excellent job, very well done. I make the motion, will we accept them as presented?
So.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, alright, um. Next is a time extension request from Granite Point. It's a re-grant for the 18th 90 day time extension for the subdivision. Subdivision, subapproval, subdivision, sub- approval, wetlands, steep slopes, tree preservation, stormwater management, and erosion and sediment control permits. As per Resolution 2017-10, and the dates are January 23rd, 2022, up to and including April 22nd, 2022. As per Town Law Section 276.7C and Town Code Section 50-13M. For the record, I, I touched base and reached out to, to now on the other day, and there are no changes in the property or anything that's being done as of right now, or as of the other day. Anybody have any, um, objections to my making the motion that we give that extension for the days I just presented?
I'll make it.
Yep, and I'll second, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Uh, next is a project review for the, um, American Tower Wireless Application for Special Use Permit on the telecommunication facility, which is the dish wireless antennas, radio cabling, and single RF cabinet on a sealed non-penetrating platform on existing monopole pow- tower.
I thought Dish was satellite TV, not, not phone, is this a new venture?
Yes, I believe it is.
Let's bring in Mr. Kovacs.
Yes.
And he's gonna.
Yeah, he could probably explain to us what they're doing here.
I think it's 5G.
We have Kovacs coming in now. It looks like we just lost him. Uh, Mr. Kovacs, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, I'm on, I just hung up from my phone, I'll just talk to the computer.
Hi, welcome sir, would you just give us a, a, a brief, um, overview of the project, please?
Uh, yes, so my name is John Kovacs, and looking at the agenda, I am here for item number two, the American Tower slash Dish Wireless Applications.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, uh, can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay, sorry, I'll talk louder. Um, so to answer the question, I am here for item number two on your agenda, which is the American Tower Dish Wireless Application for Special Use Permit.
Well, to tell you the truth, I, I think we're all a little bit in the dark on exactly what this is.
Okay. Uh, would you like me to explain for, in further detail at this point?
A little bit, yes, please.
Please, please.
Okay, alright, well, first of all, thank you all for letting me, uh, join the hearing or the meeting this evening. Um, sometimes it's nicer to do it on Zoom, so I appreciate the opportunity. Um, Dish Wireless is a new entrant to the cell, wireless cellular market, so you currently have T-Mobile, you have Verizon, you have AT&amp;T. Uh, Dish is in the process of being the fourth carrier that one can choose from regarding a cellular phone. They are in the process of developing their cellular network, so as of today, uh, they are only in the planning and development stages of their network, their network is not alive. Um, so this is one of many applications.
I cannot hear him.
I can hear him. How, how do we turn the volume up?
He has to turn the volume.
He, he's gotta get closer to the mic on his laptop, that's, uh, that would be my assessment.
Alright, let me, does this work better?
No.
No, no.
Yeah. My phone. See if I was. Hold on.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think we've lost his audio now.
Yeah.
Is this the same?
He's on a phone, not on a computer.
Yeah. Yes. The same dish that, that produces TV?
Yes.
Is that, is that what this is?
It is the same dish as, uh, uh, the satellite television, correct?
Okay, and now you're going into, into, uh, telephone?
Yes.
You are in the meeting now, there are seventeen participants in the meeting, this meeting is being.
We have another meeting in the background.
I, I think he's calling in on his phone. Yeah.
Alright, can you all hear me better?
Yes, I think you just have to mute, uh, your computer.
Does this sound better?
Yes, if you mute your computer, like Mr. Robbins said, uh, I think, uh, we'll be able to hear you through your phone. Very good.
That's better.
Very good, very, much better.
Lost him again.
What I'd like to hear is, um, from our, our town planner and our town, uh, consulting engineer, I, I don't care who goes first, Dave will start with you.
Uh, given that this is a, uh, kind of a new venture for Dish, and particularly because it's a new facility within the town of Somers, and the town has a, uh, wireless communication task force, whether you want to, uh, circulate this application to them for some initial comment before, uh, the next meeting? That would be my only suggestion at this point, I think is a fairly straightforward application, uh, but because it's a new venture, uh, in addition to the existing carriers, uh, whether that should be factored in as part of a, an overall valuation of, uh, service within town.
Yeah, Dave, um, I'm gonna be in agreement with you on that, uh, as a member of the task force myself, uh, representing the planning board, I think that would be a good idea. Uh, because my, I've always thought that Dish and AT&amp;T had a partnership, and I, I'm just, I don't understand how they can compete with them now, you know, that would be something, because it is a new venture, I don't understand all the details. Uh, that would be interesting to, 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 to learn about before, uh, you know, anything is, uh, brought forth like that.
And, and I'm sure the applicant and everyone else is seeing the memo from, uh, Woodard and Kern, so Steve, you want, oh, I'm sorry, Dave, are you done?
I was done, yes.
Okay, Steve?
Sure, excuse me, so our comments were really, um, looking for some additional information, since this is a new special use permit and not a renewal, um, as the board's been dealing with in the past. That there was some additional information that's been requested, and we asked the applicant to provide some narrative description on how, uh, they meet the proposed requirements, uh, or the requirements of the code, uh, or if those code requirements aren't applicable to provide some context, um, for this, since this is not a new tower, but it is a new co-location request, um, it is a new special use permit, and so it fits, um, into there, so the, uh, the board, I think, has some discretion as to how much detail it requires for some of those requirements, but the application needed to, uh, have some additional information to demonstrate how, um, their application fits in that context. They did provide, um, and I, and John, I appreciate the timeliness of your response, um, a, a response to our memo this past Sunday, um, we have some initial review on that, and they've, that'll be circulated to the board if it hasn't already, um, for review.
Any other board, Steve, if you're done, is there any other board member comments?
Uh, the only comment I would make is historically, this is a poorly served area for cellphone reception, and many have complained even with the erection of this giant creature, but many claim it didn't improve all that much along Route 35. Um, and I wish them well in their endeavor.
I just have a question, uh, I think it's the characteristic of cell applications, we get, um, uh, review by people from different areas, Mr. Kovacs, you're from American Tower, so you're out of Massachusetts, did you visit the site yourself? Okay. Okay, and the structural analysis report was compared, prepared by Keaton Osborne in North Carolina, and it's on the American Tower letterhead, and it's stamped by a New York engineer, Andrew Haldean, correct? We have in here. And similarly, the plans, um, Dish is based in Colorado, American, uh, Tower is listed as Massachusetts, um, we have the stamp of an engineer, Peter D. Smith, I'm assuming no relation to our Dave Smith, um, also a, uh, with the New York State Seal, correct?
Right, we would.
Okay, so it looks like those things are in order then, would you, uh, on your initial review of things, Dave, would you agree, and Steve? Because sometimes I know we've had problems in that regard.
Okay. There, there was one piece of specific language that we noted, um, that is part of the code requirement that the structural engineer needs to attest to, and that just needs to be added to the structural report.
Great, okay, thank you, alright, and I look forward to, um, hearing, I don't know, uh, Chris, do you know, will we get like a memo back from the committee, because, uh, it really is interesting as to, you know, the advent of a new provider, and, um, you know, sort of that timing of what happens as they get ready to launch, so supposing it doesn't happen, what happens if, you know, equipment gets added, and then the venture doesn't pan out like they thought, and it's sitting there on the tower? You wouldn't want to take up space for another provider where somebody else could go, so will we get a, a memo back from the?
Uh, yes, I will, uh, I will discuss it with the leads of the task force, and, uh, we will, uh, you know, see what the next course of action is to get the information from the applicant, and, uh, dive into it, we have specialists on the task force that are in the industry and may be able to understand this a little bit better, as far as the partnership is concerned, um, and what that means is a new venture for us here in Somers. So yes, we would be able to get you a memo, and I will be able to brief you, because I will be present for those meetings myself.
Awesome, thank you very much, Chris, that's all, that was one of my questions, thank you.
Vicky, the, the town does, um, retain a, a demolition bond for the removal of equipment for something like this.
Oh, great, thank you, that's, thank you.
Thank you, Steve, I didn't know, I wasn't aware of that.
I know for towers overall, but I didn't know if for the particular installation.
For the antenna, yeah.
The antenna, yes.
I believe that's correct, I will confirm that.
So, Mr. Kovacs, do you have any more questions from us, I, I guess, you, you know what we're looking for, for our next meeting from you?
Once you submit the additional information, uh, Mr. Robbins and I will go through, uh, make sure that everything is there and enough information and enough detail, uh, we will coordinate the, uh, circulation with Mr. Zabertow and the, uh, the task force, make sure that they have, uh, the information, um, that's been submitted to date and what will be submitted. And at the next meeting, uh, given, if everything is in order, then, uh, the planning board has the opportunity to schedule a public hearing.
Thank you very much, unless there's any other board comments, and we will, we'll be in touch with you next month. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Um, next on our agenda is, uh, an informal presentation from, um, First Stat Fiddle Properties, it's a proposed redevelopment of Somers Commons Shopping Center, the address is 80 Route 6. And I, I see we want to let in, um, Eleanor Biddle, and I don't see who any, who else would be coming in.
Uh, Anoop is here, Eleanor's here, and I, I saw Wing at some point, there, there's Wings here.
Evening, so, I guess, does one of you want to give us a little, um, overview of this, please?
Wing, you're on, uh, you're on mute.
Okay, there we go, yes, I'll start, thank you. Um, thank you, Bob, uh, we had prepared a, uh, a short presentation that, um, we were hoping we might be able to share on the screen to, uh, walk you through, um. Anoop is going to attempt that, but it seems like Anoop needs to be, uh, let in, maybe?
Uh, that's, that's right, Wing.
Um, there isn't a, and no Misra, and there you go, right there.
There you go, thank you.
Excellent, well, uh, Nope's figuring out how to share screen that, so, uh, just introductions, I'm, I'm Wing Biddle, I'm, I'm president of First Step Fiddle Properties, we own, uh, three shopping centers in town, uh, one of which is Somers Commons, the other is Heritage 202, and the other one is the Town Center, uh, Shopping Center. Um, also with us is Ellie Biddle, uh, who is, uh, the leasing agent of those three properties, and then Anoop Misra, who is a consultant working with us, who's an expert in, uh, residential development, uh, and what we want.
I'm sorry, Wing, I'm not able to pull up the screen for some strange reason.
Uh, no, it's up, it's up, Anoop.
Can you see my screen? Great.
Yeah, it's up, so.
Okay.
Um, I'll, you can't see it, but I'll, I'll ask you just move, uh, to the next slide, if you would, okay, so, um, we're here to talk about Somers Commons, and I'll make this as quick as I can. Um, uh, Somers Commons has always been, uh, a, a pretty successful shopping center for us, it's obviously, it's anchored by a, a Stop &amp; Shop that does well, and its other anchor, uh, is Home Goods. Um, it has about twenty-seven stores, and there are about four vacancies in that shopping center now. Um, the, you know where it is, it's up in the, in the corner there on Route 6, right along the, uh, the Putnam, uh, border. Um, it's a good-sized shopping center, and, um, this is a slide that just gives you, you all know the shopping center as well as I do, because you live here, but, um, it's an interesting area, you know, it's, it has the multifamily, uh, Avalon Bay Development next to it, has the senior housing project next to it. Um, and then it's got single-family and other commercial, it's right on Route 6, it's kind of up there in the corner, uh, you know, the corner of Somers, right there by the Putnam border, um, as I was starting to say, our problem that we have right now is that, um, Home Goods, uh, which is a thirty thousand square foot tenant, uh, is leaving the shopping center, they have signed a lease at the Count Portland Town Center, and they're under construction over there now, and they're gonna move, uh, probably early March, um, which is unfortunate, uh, the reason they're moving is because Marshalls is in that property, and that's a sister company of theirs, and they like to be, you know, they like to cluster their stores together, Home Goods is owned by TJ Maxx, which also owns Marshalls. So, uh, we have a problem on our hands, we have a thirty thousand square foot box, and, um, I don't need to tell you all, there's been a lot of challenges in the retail world, certainly over the last two years, but, uh, even before that, due to, uh, you know, the rise of internet sales, and it's more and more difficult to find what I would call big-box retailers to come into this type of a shopping center, which is a neighborhood grocery-anchored, uh, shopping center. So, um, we're struggling, we have reached out to about a hundred different retailers in the country. Uh, we, you know, we own about eighty properties, and we, we have contacts with a lot of tenants, and unfortunately, we're not doing very well in terms of attracting a quality retailer to this, and I'm very concerned that this store is gonna go dark, and we're not gonna be able to find a replacement for it. Um, the problem, Anoop, if we could maybe go to the next slide, um, oh, this just shows you that it's a, it's in the CS zone, it's, that's actually the only CS zone in Somers, so it's, it's fairly unique, uh, you know, this, this zone in Somers, uh, if we look at the next slide, okay. So the prob, this, this slide just shows, um, what the current situation is at the shopping center, yellow is a vacant store, blue is upcoming vacant, the problem that we have is that the Home Goods space is about two hundred and, I think it's about two hundred and twenty feet deep, and it's about a hundred and sixty feet wide, uh, there is some demand for small stores, although we do have, you know, four small stores. small stores, although we do have, you know, four small stores available now. But the problem is, there's no demand really for big stores that we have been able to uncover at this point. And in order to subdivide this, this property, this store, we would end up with long bowling alleys, or just be a very, very difficult thing to do. So we're looking at a potential white elephant, and we're scared of that, and we don't like what that's going to do to the value of the shopping center, or the effect on the other tenants in the shopping center. And we're trying to be as proactive as we can. So we've been looking at this property, thinking, what could we do with this space that would be a better use than what's here now, in a vacant box? And, yeah, Anoop, maybe we could jump to the next one. The, okay, so here we have the, the box, the thirty thousand-foot box, which has got the vacant on it. And then there's a blue line which divides it from, from Goodwill, and then there's Old Stone Creamery and Penny Lane Dance in the back there. What we would like to do, and explore this with you all, and, and take your temperature on your receptivity to it, is we would like to turn Somers Commons into, really, to follow the trend of what's happening in retail shopping centers around the country, which is to make it more of a mixed-use property, where we can have residential in and amongst the stores, where kind of a, more of a live-work-play environment. Probably thirty-five percent of the new development in this country right now that involves retail is mixed-use. It's designed, the old days of just building a shopping center, and then having, you know, housing the next lot over, and then office the next lot over. That, that system or that thought has really changed and morphed into a mixed-use concept. Quality retailers prefer to be in mixed-use developments these days. And having people living in the, in the community, they shop at the stores, there's less driving around all the neighbor, you know, going from one shopping center to the other, that people are living there. The, the people that live there support the retail, they support the restaurants. It's a nice, it's a nice environment. So we would like to explore building an apartment building where the Home Goods is, and tearing down the Home Goods, and then building a apartment building. And I'm going to turn it over to Anoop now to talk about it. It's, Anoop has a lot of experience. He's built many, many, many apartment buildings. He used to be director of real estate for Trammell Crow, their, their development arm, and you know, was very familiar with us, and I think he'll be very good to share his, his thoughts with you. But just one last comment is that, you know, a good thing about having a mixed-use property with an apartment building in it is that it, it, it gives a location in town for millennials that want to come to Somers, want to try out Somers for a year to, to live and, and to see what the community is like. It also creates a great amenity for the town when people get older, they want to downsize. A lot of people will, actually, older people will want to live in this building. I, I live in a community in Southern Westchester where there's a Avalon Apartment Building, and there's a mixed age group in that. There are young people, there are older people, people rent apartments when they're renovating their homes. If they're going to do a major renovation, they'll move into the apartment building. Just creates a great amenity for the town. And Somers doesn't really have this right now. So I think it would be a great thing for the town, and I think it would be a great thing for our shopping center, and it would preserve the tax base of this shopping center. So let me turn it over to Anoop.
Thank you, Wing. Good evening, everybody. My name is Anoop Misra. I live in Lower Westchester County as well. I've been a county resident for over thirty-five years and been doing development for close to thirty. Wing engaged me to look at the Somers Common site and figure out how best to take advantage of some of the unused asset value that we can derive, especially coupled with the fact that some of the retail that exists may not last out for the next ten years. And with Home Goods leaving, it was an opportunity for us to consider the square lot underlying the Home Goods store. So we looked at this in different, different ways. A number of people, number of units, number of footfalls, people that can walk from here to the medical center, the groceries, the retail, the restaurants, and also use the banking without having to get into the car to drive over to the next property. And we came up with a optimum unit size, number of a hundred and sixty apartments, which would be a perfect fit for this location, because as you all know, Avalon Somers is a hundred and fifty-two units, all three stories, walk-ups, and they're doing fantastically well, which means there's a demand for quality residential housing in this town. And as Wing talked about, the target markets, the millennials, downsizing baby boomers, there's a, there's a need, there's a, there's a gap that needs to be filled by this submarket. So we looked at a mix of ones and twos and three bedrooms. We also looked at amenity spaces that'd be symbiotic with the other amenities already exist on this campus. And lastly, we looked at the zoning. Good thing about CS zoning is that it allows apartments as a right. What it doesn't allow are the number of apartments in five stories, because we have to build a hundred and sixty units in five stories. Clearly, with these hundred and sixty units, we lack fifteen percent affordable units, so that's the advantage. The other advantage, of course, is that there's excess parking on this campus. Some of the parking goes unused, so we don't have to build parking to accommodate the needs of the residents here. And of course, last thing here is that a big box that lies vacant, it attracts unsavory elements to the, to the campus, which is what one doesn't want. So we looked at this as an option. We also looked at the amenities, you know, typically bike sharing. We looked at some representative type of views the building would look like. It would be a courtyard with amenities. There'd be five thousand square feet of indoor amenities, fitness center and so on. And most importantly, it'll be a lifestyle building. A lifestyle building attracts the downsizing baby boomers, as well as millennials who prefer to work from home or work in a co-share space. With that in mind, we looked at, what does that mean for the development? If this were to be built, we would obviously take out the thirty thousand square foot Goodwill space, but add new multifamily to it. The overall development would be about three hundred and fifty-eight thousand square feet. Currently, it's two hundred and thirteen thousand square feet, which means that the currently applied FAR of point two would have to be increased to point two nine. So we'd be building about a hundred and ten thousand square feet in excess of what's currently allowed. We'll also be seeking a variance in heights from two stories to five stories. But overall, what this asset does, it adds value to the town. Additional property taxes, that's a no-brainer. We also have to consider that if the retail box were to go away, it lies vacant, there'd be loss of taxes. Secondly, there are additional sales taxes generated by folks that live here. They spend a percentage of their income on goods and services. We obviously know that the retailers will also benefit. There'll be permanent jobs created. There'll be a hundred and eighty thousand or so temporary construction jobs created. We're looking at, of course, affordable housing units, twenty-four of those. We also believe that the town will have, it will generate fees from building permits and sewer taps and other DPW and approval fees. But overall, we think it's an asset to the town, especially looking at how successful the Avalon Somers has been. This is a project I've seen in my career, generate a lot of revenue for towns that I've worked with, and also for developers that bring in new ideas. That's, that's the overall view of town, Wing. This last slide is about Erstad Biddle, if you want to.
Yeah, I just wanted to, you all, I think, know us. We, you know, we've, we've been a fixture in the community since nineteen ninety-two. When we bought Heritage Two O Two Center, and then we bought Town Center at Somers in nineteen ninety-nine. We've held that and renovated it, and we've owned Somers Commons since two thousand and three. We are, we are a public, REIT, and we don't sell properties, and we hold properties, and we, we're part of the community. We want the community to thrive, and we're, we're here to stay. Importantly, you know, these properties generate almost a million, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of taxes. I think we're, I think behind Pepsi and IBM, we're the largest taxpayer, private taxpayer in town, and our taxes are hopefully going up and not going down like IBM or Pepsi. So we're, I just wanted to, you know, reiterate that what's good for Somers is good for us, and I think vice versa. One thing Anoop mentioned in his presentation, he mentioned Goodwill leaving, but I, he, he was meaning Home Goods is leaving. Goodwill will be staying there. And this will, we think, create about a hundred and eighty thousand short-term, you know, construction jobs. So that's really the, the general presentation, and I hope we didn't take up too much of your time, and we'd love to get your feedback.
But what I'd like to do is hear from our, our town planner and our town consultant engineer, and then board member comments, please. Dave?
Yep. So what Wing is, as Anoop has gone through, is consistent with what's happening in other parts of Westchester County. Right down the road, there's a retail campus in your town that's proposing a residential component to, to, as an infill along the I two eighty-seven corridor. There have been a number of underutilized office properties that have been converted into commercial establishments or a mixed-use commercial and retail, where residential and residential or residential. There's certainly a need, as the Westchester County Plan Department has indicated, there's a need for housing in Westchester County of all types, not just single-family but multifamily. And certainly, there's a need for affordable houses. So I think there are a lot of synergies that could be created with, with this type of concept. I think, obviously, going through and analyzing, one of the things that, that I would suggest that the town look at is you have an existing facility, you're losing a part of that, and you're replacing it with something else. So how does that relate to, for example, traffic? And understanding that if, if the the impact is within kind of the overall envelope, then you really, you're, you're, you're kind of limiting the overall impact to the, to the greater community with things like with traffic, with water and sewer. So those are, those would be some of the things that I think that if the town wants to move forward with a concept like this, that they would want to consider as part of the environment. Those are my initial comments.
Thank you. Steve?
For some of, from an engineering perspective, there is water and sewer through this area. In fact, I do want to take a quick moment to recognize the partnership that the town has had with UBP at this property. The town has water and water easement that runs through their property and recently had a project where we did install some new infrastructure in that area, and the UBB, UBP team was great to work with and, and accommodating of the town's need to access that easement and, and coordinate our activities with them. So I I do want to recognize that. But there is public water and sewer here from a stormwater perspective, taking existing impervious surface and, and keeping it that way is certainly better than taking new green space and, and developing that. And the reuse of existing facilities means that stormwater impacts are minimized as well. So from an infrastructure standpoint, you know, that, that has some, some advantages there. I, I do note for the board, and I'm sure there's, this will come up later, that there is certainly another retail project proposed to the board of a similar size retail, just on the other side of the shopping center with Tractor Supply. And so I'd be interested if that was looked at with this as well. But from a, from an engineering perspective, those would be some of the key things that we'd be looking at, and this is relatively straightforward from those perspectives. I'd also like to hear from the applicant a bit more about from a residential perspective connectivity. You're kind of dropping a residential property in the middle of a parking area and, and circulation road. And so maybe just a little bit of expansion on some of those internal amenities or green space. That has certainly been a, a part of recent real estate developments in the town and having that green space amenity for residents.
And just for the record, Dave, they will need to go to the town board for a code change. Is that not correct?
It's more than that. It's more than that. Is it time for them to hear from the board?
If, if Steve is done, then.
I'm done. I've said, I've said enough. Thank you all.
I would like to comment since I took part in the preparation of the last planning master plan, comprehensive master plan. For your information, we had an golden opportunity. By the way, your presentation was excellent. We had a golden opportunity, if you consider it what you're proposing, a golden opportunity offered to us before. That was when PepsiCo left. And the first reuse of that was to, was suggested to have it be housing. And the town board did a flip and said, absolutely not. We don't have apartment buildings. And you need to keep that in mind. That was one of the key elements of our master plan. It's not in the master plan for obvious reasons. And while it's good for you, it really isn't all that great for us, all of a sudden have a five-story apartment building. There's the matter of investment in a fire department and its capability of dealing with an apartment building. I have to say, the only zone in town that I'm aware of that allows more than two stories is the DRD, Heritage Hills. They're allowed to have, when that was constructed, they would be allowed three stories. So that's maximum. Actually, I'm surprised. This is a major, major change to our zoning, and you actually need to go to the town board. It's not up to us to change. We're not legislative. We don't change zones. Normally, we just consider what is allowed, and we deal with that. And my suggestion is, before you spend more time and money, that you go to the town board and find out how they feel about it, because that's where the power lies. It does not lie with us. But I just want to warn you what the history is. And the history is apartment buildings are not meant to be in the future of the town of Somers and its desire for open space and the likes. I'm true.
I'd like to follow up on Nancy's thing, Nancy's discussion, which is, how did you come up with the size of the building that you've, that you're talking about? Is there, is there a point at where it's economically not feasible at one size? Or I, I need to have a, have a little understanding of why you're going five stories, why you're doing a hundred and sixty.
Rentable square feet within that plot of land.
Excuse me?
Rentable square feet within the confined area of that land. You have to go up. You can't go out.
Well, no, but I'm saying, I mean, what, what would be, what would be their answer if, if somehow we decided it only could be three stories? Is that? three stories? Is that une- uneconomically for their building?
Uh, I can, I can take a crack at answering your question, Bruce, if I may.
Sure.
Um, uh, as I, when I described the amount of land available to build this, it basically replaces the thirty thousand square foot home goods store. And there is some residual land south of it or north of it, which is unused. So when you combine them all, it's about uh uh close to an acre. About forty-two thousand square feet. And knowing the fact that you've got to maintain the fire separations, you have to maintain sprinklers, you've got to fireproof the building. Um, and uh, as Nancy's concerns were about the effect in the fire department, you've got to ma- maintain fire escape staircase that are safe havens and everything else that, that meets the international building code. Um, the number of units per floor are limited. As you can, if you do a straight math out of this one, one sixty divided by five is about thirty units per floor. And if we do three floors, that's less than a hundred apartments. And if you look at the mix in the apartments, most of these units are ones and two bedrooms. Young people that shop, that order stuff online. So once we have to generate the number of footfalls to support that retail, the existing retail, uh, there's got to be some uh, uh minimum number of people that have to shop there. So we came up with this uh one fifty, one sixty unit count. When we did the math on number of units per floor, we came up with five stories. Now, can we accommodate all those one sixty units in four stories, for example? Yes, we can, but we will have to eliminate some of the larger units, the two bedrooms, and give up completely on the three bedrooms. And we know the, um, for one thing, the um, uh, last couple of years have basically shown us how the downsizing baby boomers are behaving. They're selling their homes and they're downsizing to apartments. So we need a, at least a bunch of three-bedroom units to accommodate those residents who live their lives in Somers and don't have to leave Somers to go some other place. So that's where the unit mix is generating a hundred and seventy-five thousand of square feet of development, which means that we need five stories. Now, can we accommodate everything in four stories? We have to change the unit mix then.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand. I just wanted an explanation. I mean, I know in my, in my experience at Heritage Hills, that the three-bedroom units are the most uh desirable ones that uh, uh, are on, on the market. They go very quickly. So I understand why you're talking about three-bedroom units. Uh, so I, I just wanted to f- find out some, some of the economics of the building. That's why.
And, and also, Bruce, what I've noticed in my career, especially in Lower Westchester County, where you have a bunch of ones and two bedrooms, it attracts singles and couples with babies that are looking to buy homes in that community, but before they buy something, they like to test it out. So that's why we have uh forty-five percent of a hundred and sixty units are one bedrooms, forty-five percent of those are two bedrooms, and the remaining ten percent are three bedrooms.
Okay.
I, I'd just like to, for the record, cir- circle back to where Nancy was. And for the record and for anybody who's watching and listening, the code issue is this. When you look at the Somers zoning code, and pardon me turning my head, it's on my monitor over here, we're talking about the zoning code. And we're in Article five A Community Shopping District, the C S District. If you look at section one seventy dash twenty-one point two, principal uses E is residential apartments over stores. Residential apartments over stores. So as I'm listening to this, and I apologize if I've missed something, this is being described as, as um a multifamily development. I'm not hearing that this is a multifamily development, the ground floor level of which will be stores.
Yeah.
Because as you're describing it to me, you're sort of making the argument that at least the entire footprint is not something that is conducive to that activity. So I just kind of wanted to make sure I'm understanding it, and, and I think I am, and sort of kind of put that out there. And also, um, I think you were just making the sort of, you were making the logical argument that the units have to the residential units have to support the existing retail. And I thought that was an interesting argument. Is it your feeling that Home Goods, and I shop at Home Goods, that the traffic that brings Home Goods to the development is also supporting the other existing buildings there? Do you have metrics to substantiate that? Um, because you seem to be making the argument that these units have to support, and I think that's what you said, have to support the existing retail. So if you could address those two things, please.
Um, Anup, I can handle the, for the last one. So, yes, uh, tenants want to be in shopping centers that have anchor stores. That's why uh eighty percent of these tenants that are in there now want to be in this shopping center because there's a stop and shop. A major part of their uh, their reasoning is also that there was another anchor in their Home Goods. I mean, I I think that's probably general knowledge for everybody, right? I mean, the, the reason that, that you have shopping centers is because you have clusters of stores where people come and they park and then they shop at multiple stores. And then they leave. The reason they want to be, uh, they, the, the reason tenants want to be in shopping centers is to be near anchor stores. So um, I, I don't know if, if I could give you any uh direct evidence, I could probably come up with about, I don't know, a hundred articles that would explain it, but I think it's just sort of a given thing that, that's uh, that's why it's important to have an anchor. Um, we, as you can see on um this slide eleven, we were proposing that the uh apartment building would be a freestanding apartment building rather than being over retail. And why did we do that? Because we already have vacant retail stores. We didn't get the idea to build tear down a building, rebuild a building, and bail back more stores that were going to be difficult to lease. We thought it was better to keep it all uh, an apartment building and have it be part of a mixed use development where you'd have a freestanding apartment building next to uh other retail stores. Um, that works the best from a construction point of view. I think it probably works the best from a attractiveness point of view. Um, and it's just sort of the way it's done these days. And um, it just I hate, I would hate the idea of building something that I know is not going to lease. Because I'm a businessman.
Okay, I appreciate your answer. I mean, maybe the whole um anchor thing, maybe it's a COVID thing. I go, I shop, I leave. Very pinpoint precision. That's why I'm, that's my current consumer behavior. So I, I appreciate the explanation. And uh, but I think that the existing um issue is, and, and back to Nancy, that the planning board, we're not a policy port, part of the town um that you really need to go before the town board um to address uh one seventy uh dash twenty-one point two residential apartments over stores, because that's how it's framed as, as I'm seeing it in the C S.
Right, and I'll, um, Ms. Cannon, I'll take a crack at answering your first comment about uh multifamily being on top of retail versus adjacent to it. Um, as, as, as Ring explained, um, that there's no point building more retail. One of the other things, of course, is for us to consider, um, for, for this body or the zoning board, the town board to consider. I think it's the essence of what the zoning says. Building apartments on top of retail and building apartments next to retail, it's the, it's the, it's the end result. What, what town wants to have them both together? So that uh there's activity at all points in time, at points of time. Um, building it next to that retail ensures that the other retail somewhere. There's, it'll be hard to build on top of existing retail, given the fact that they're already occupied.
It's also a lot cleaner to build an apartment building by itself rather than over, you know, people don't like to live over a restaurant or over a store that's got a truck coming and making a delivery in the morning, you know? Um, it's just, that's the why. That, that's really why mixed-use developments are built the way they are now.
Any other board member comments?
I only have one item, and that's uh technically, and I'm sure that there's at more than adequate capacity for water and sewer. But if we're replacing a retail uh store, which has very little use of the water and sewer with a hundred and sixty uh residential units, there's going to be a significant increase. And I need, I just need to see the quantitative analysis.
Yes.
Says that there is more than adequate capacity.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we are limited in the amount of sewage that we can pump over to peak scale. So I don't know how this formulates into that.
Yeah.
And whether the, that's the other consideration.
Yeah, I, I, I don't mean it to be a stumbling block. I just want to be sure that we're not creating a, a problem.
And um, uh, Mr. McNamara, that'd be the first thing we'll do, is to analyze the existing capacity, existing uh uh on the street and how much the, the uh campus is generating. And if we delete the goods, uh, the Home Goods store and add a hundred and sixty units, uh, what does that do to the existing capacity? Can it, can it handle it? That'd be the first thing we'll do.
Good. I'm sure
I just, I just want to say for the record, um, I don't think, I'm not in favor of a five-story building anywhere in this town. To be honest with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna be the, the, the last member to, to speak, and I was gonna be pretty direct with that. Um, you know, uh, all the other uh board members uh that I sit here with have brought up some very valid points, uh, zoning and code. Uh, it's all, it's, or some of them, um, aesthetics is the other. Uh, I understand that, uh, you know, and I can appreciate this paradigm where you mix uh residential in uh with the retail. Uh, but I think a, a five-story structure is quite bold for Northern Westchester. I'd like to know where the closest five-story residential structure is compared to Somers. Also liked to, where is it? Danbury, right?
Probably Danbury.
Yeah. Um, I'd also like to know, you know, a hundred and sixty units, three-bedroom, we're looking at two cars per household. I think that's pretty much the average, safe average in Somers. I don't know exactly. You know, we're talking an additional three hundred and twenty-some-odd vehicles already in a mixed shopping center that uh sometimes gets full capacity around holiday times. Um, I mean, there's a, there's a, there would be a ton of challenges here from an infrastructure standpoint. Um, and then I also think from a public opinion standpoint. And uh, I, I think uh Mr. Mr. Biddle brought it up, you know, people look to come to Somers, uh, you know, for the fact that it is a uh quiet, um, eucolic town. Um, and I just don't see as a resident, uh, how a five-story apartment complex, I'll call it that, a hundred and sixty units, uh, I would definitely call it's an apartment complex uh with fire escapes and uh three hundred and twenty additional parking spots um is a fit, is a good fit for Somers. I'll just come out and say it. On top of the challenges that you guys would have with having to change legislation with the town board, as Nancy said. Um, and, you know, we have to verify that our fire department can handle this. I don't know if we have a tower ladder tall enough to, to, to get to the roof. I'm, I'm, don't know the level of training that these guys have, and I apologize for that. Um, you know, whether they can even handle operating in a, in a dense hundred and sixty-unit apartment building. And so I would be concerned for our volunteers that, that are also residents of the town. I mean, this is a very bold project. Uh, I, I, I will give you that. And again, I understand the concept. Um, but I believe it belongs down county.
May I just add that the gentleman that just finished speaking is a former New York City farmer?
Uh, well, close. I was a, a New York City police detective, but I am cross-trained as a firefighter and a rescue specialist. So um, you know, I, I do come in sometimes with a public safety view here on the board. Um, and that on top of everything else, uh, this is a, a, a massive project. And what I know about the demographics in town and how, you know, our residents feel about uh large structures. We've had challenges in the past. We've had, we've had uh bold proposals where we've cut down to, you know, two stories. Um, I, I, I think I, I really don't, I, I don't see public opinion in your favor either. Uh, not to mention all the other hurdles that you have to do. And I respect that you guys are, 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 you know, it's a business and you're looking to preserve that. I would hate to see the shopping center collapse. Um, but I really think that we, we need to keep it retail. That's my personal opinion. Um, you know, we, we'll we'll entertain you guys when you, when you come back uh with a site plan and we start entering into those phases after you talk to the town board. Um, but I, I really think that this is a, 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 not a good fit for Somers as uh as John said.
Um, if I may, uh, Mrs. Alberto, uh, first of all, thank you for your service. Uh, uh, appreciate your service as a policeman, as a, as a detective. Um, just to clarify a couple of things, um, uh, just want to be clear. Out of those hundred and sixty units, only sixteen units are three bedrooms. All the others are uh fifty-fifty, either one bedrooms or two bedrooms. Um, and uh, your, your points are well taken about the fire department, the uh height of the town ladder, uh, since you've been in that uh side of the fence, you know exactly what goes to the training. So we, that's one of the first things we'll do, we'll also speak with the fire department and see what their restrictions are. And uh, the, the, the massivity of this development, it's well taken. Uh, our role will be as a developer of these one sixty units uh would be to minimize the impact, the overall, all-bearing impact, the heights, the floor-to-floor heights that can be cur- curtailed, uh, that, that can be contained within our development. And the last thing, of course, is when you talked about um the changing of legislation, as Ring pointed out, this is the only property in the town of Somers that's zoned C S. So any changes you enact on C S to C S will not impact any other property.
Can you, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but uh I don't have a lot of zoning experience. Can you tell me what the C S means exactly? For Somers?
Big C S is a short for community shopping.
Community shopping, okay.
Community shopping. But if zoning changed to five stories, is
Right.
is the president's uh maker.
Right.
It doesn't matter where it is.
There, there, there's two things involved. The, the zoning change for the height and also for the fact that it's not going to be um housing over um commercial.
Right, and, and that's to Nancy's point where it would have to be unless you change legislation.
Yeah.
Which is not, which is not us, like I said before.
Right.
We're gonna have to go to the town board for this.
Yes.
Right.
And normally, that's what happens. That's how IBM was done.
Right.
They didn't come to us. That's how PepsiCo was done. They didn't come to us. You go to the town board first. You can't get by them. If you can get by them, you come back and we deal with it.
Absolutely. Well, we'll entertain anything that you put in front of us and make sure it conforms to legislation and environmental and and all the other, all the other elements that we do as a, as a board.
Yeah.
But yeah, I, it's just, it's just a lot of hurdles.
Yeah. I just want to remind everybody, especially this applicant, that it was the town of Somers that bailed out the county of Westchester for redlining.
For affordable housing.
For affordable housing. And we've just completed doing that along here, along Route six. And we received a, an award for being done so well. This would alter it.
A, a question, can, can you just circle back to your argument of how this is different functionally than what Avalon does for people? Avalon does for people. I think you were trying to make the argument that. People who wanted to rent a place for a year while they got their, that somehow this was very different. So different than Avalon, and I'm not seeing.
The difference.
If it, yeah, because it's, it's rent, it's rentals. I, I'm just not, and it's not age restricted. And it would have a mix of affordable in there. So I'm just not. Getting at that level. What your argument was.
Um, uh, Ms. Cannon, I think the big difference between. Avalon Somers and this one. Is Avalon Somers is a walk-up building, there are no elevators. This would be a fully elevated building.
It would have to be. It's five stories high.
But that's not what you were discussing. You were discussing it in terms of, not you, but. Mr. Biddle was discussing in terms of, of what it provides as an opportunity for people as an alternate type of housing, but that type of housing does actually exist. Over at Avalon. Correct?
Whi- which I believe is only two stories too.
Uh, uh, three stories.
I'm, I'm not su- well, w- w- we can look into it, but my understanding of that property was it was two stories.
That's two, two to three.
Um, they're on hillside.
To risk, uh, swimming uphill. Uh, against the current, um, I understand why you're talking about. Not building housing, uh, housing over retail. I mean, with the change of. The retail structure that's going on with, uh, buying on, on, uh. On the internet and, uh. And, and just the general vacancies of stores all over the place. I mean, all you have to do is. Is, is go anywhere and you'll see empty stores. I can understand that. The reason I mentioned about the building height was I know there was going to be. Re, you know, some. Obviously, a lot of pushback of at a five-story building. So I'm just trying to figure out. Is, is, does the, can you work on at, uh, some economic scale where. You might be able to get away with something less than a five-story building that might be more amenable to, uh, the town. That's, that's something you might want to look into.
Also, in the big scheme of things, what would you do? And I'm not wishing it on you, please understand me, but what would you do if you lost another large tenant? What would you do if you lost Goodwill, for example?
Um.
I mean, try adjacent to it, it's, you know, supposing you built the housing and then. You lose that as a tenant, what do you do? Cause we're talking about the instability of the retail market fundamentally. That's what's bringing us all here to this discussion, right?
Yeah, look, um, Ms. Cannon, we're, we're faced with a situation where we. We can't, um, really. Help ourselves. Because we need some zoning flexibility. In order to help ourselves. We, the easy solution here would be to do nothing. And not try to deal with reality. And face. A declining property. And then, and then nobody would have to do anything and wouldn't have to worry about anything. Except I'd have to worry about it because I couldn't. I'd have to appeal the taxes and it would just be. Not a good thing for the town. We're here. We're part of the town. We're trying to. See if there's a way that your. Uh, y- y- your board. Can assist us and support us so that we can. Work together to try to preserve. A property. These, these things you all are raising are. They're, they're all very valid. The height of the. Uh, fire equipment, whether or not there's a not enough sewer, whether or not. Parking is sufficient. These, these are all mechanical things that I think that can be worked out. We're not gonna. Build something that's not gonna work. But we're just looking for some support and some flexibility. So that we can try to help ourselves. To build an apartment building. Is an expensive. Project, uh, and it's. Uh, to build a two-story, to tear a building down and build a two-story apartment building. Generally isn't, isn't gonna work from an economics point of view. Um. So, you know, we don't have, uh. Fifteen acres of land or whatever Avalon. Development is over there to, to deal with. We have. We have a, an acre of land. That we had a tenant paying a reasonable rent out and that tenant's gonna be gone. And we're not gonna get nearly the same kind of rent because we're not gonna be able to really rent it. So. Um. I don't really know what to tell you when you, when you ask me, what am I gonna do if Goodwill leaves? I don't know. You know, uh, I'm gonna pray. I'm gonna pray. I'm gonna hope that I can find tenants. But that's not the way that we wish the town. Would work with us. Um, we have. Just, you know, we have other properties in other communities where. There's a, an understanding of the change of retail. And it's more of a. Holy smokes, we need to see what we can do. To help out these guys so that they can help solve their own problems. If the town of Somers doesn't have that. Type of an attitude. Then I'm in a bit of a jam, um. And that's, that's, I guess, just what I have to face, unfortunately.
I mean, the, we're just, I'm just a planning board member. Where you need to go, as Nancy said, is the town board. So I'm just trying to really. Listen to what you're saying and, and understand and, and just. You, you, you're here and I'm just trying to ask questions, so I'm, you know, and, and. Honestly, you were the ones who brought up the analogy to Avalon, so I'm just trying to fully understand. The points that you're making, so please understand my questions are, are, um. Meant to be respectful. I, I do not wish any negativity toward what you're trying to accomplish at all.
If, if I may, um, Ms. Cannon, I think your points are well taken. Uh, these are things that we have to look out for. Uh, how do we separate ourselves from Avalon? And, and how are we similar to Avalon? Clearly, there's some overlap there, what they attract and what we'll attract, there's some overlap. They help the retail here, we'll, we'll also help the retail here. But your points are well taken, uh, everybody that's brought up the fire issue, the sewer issue, the traffic issue, parking issues. These are things we have to address. And address them to everyone's satisfaction. Yours, the town boards, especially the town board for where we'd be seeking a zoning text change. Uh, but the key, but the key thing here is that, uh, this is a transition that's happening. Across all towns in Westchester County, whether they're south of two eighty-seven or north of two eighty-seven. Cortland Manor is rezoning the area around the hospital. To MOD and they're attracting about a hundred and seventy apartments, about two hundred thousand square feet of medical office buildings. And senior housings, which I was involved in. So I, I think what's happening is that this. Change, this transition is creeping up north. And as people leave Manhattan, they leave Brooklyn. They leave the bigger cities, they move to the suburban townships, what are they looking for? They're looking to buy homes, but they also want to feel comfortable that they have shopping that they can go to. They don't have to get into their car to drive to the, uh, the, uh, the pharmacy or the bank. And the big change that. We think. Will happen once this project is built. It'll bring in. I hate to use this phrase. New blood into the town. They'll buy those homes that'll be up for sale in five years from now. Or ten years from now. And especially those baby boomers, the downsizing baby boomers born just after the war. Looking to downsize. And where will they go? They have to stay, they would love to stay in this town. Now, there are enough three-bedroom units in Avalon given. And they're all full. And we know from anecdotal evidence, Westchester County is dying. For three-bedroom units, but. Not all of them want to be in. Downtown of big cities. New Rochelle, White Plains, Yonkers have their own attractions, but so does Somers. The bucolic nature of this town will attract. People. That are looking for that kind of a surrounding. I think that's, that's the big thing that Somers has to offer. And to take advantage of it. Would be the perfect match between this location, the apartments that we are looking to build. And the support of the town we expect it. To the, their town to give us. That's, that's the, that's the, that was the purpose of coming to the, to the, uh, to the board today.
You used the key word bucolic. We are bucolic. And how we keep that. Is by not having apartment buildings that are five stories high.
Um, Ms. Urbino, you, you had objected. To the idea of apartments and drawing a reference to Pepsi and that, that it had been denied at Pepsi at one point. I think the Pepsi site is a totally different type of site.
It was the number of stories.
I know, but what, what we're trying to accomplish here is to go to a. Mixed-use type concept for the property.
We're very familiar with it. All of Route Six is mixed, mixed use.
Anything which is constructed or erected which requires location.
Okay.
The, uh, your, you know, your, your discussion about. Again, I may be, uh, the odd man out on this. But your discussion about having an empty, a large empty store in your shopping center. Everybody knows that. Uh, empty stores breed other empty stores.
Yes.
And the last thing we would want would be, uh, the unsuccessful. Or the, uh, the, the lack of occupancy in this area. The other thing is this area. You, this area is, is a developed commercial area. It's not like it's in the middle of. Of da- of downtown Somers or in the mid, in the middle of a residential area of Somers. So I, um. I don't know, I, I really. I really, I, I mean, I agree with Nancy that five stories is a, is a problem. But I'm also trying to figure out if you guys could come up with something that's more suitable to this area. Uh.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not against the apartments.
No.
But that's.
Same here, same here. Just five stories.
I, I think if I'm understanding the flavor of the board, I, I, I think we're pretty much all agreeing that this would be a nice project for the apartments, but. I think it's the, the size. I mean, some of what you mentioned before about Somers being an attractive town. We are a town without five-story buildings right now, and I hate to see. Even one change the character of the town. I know it's not downtown Somers, I understand that. But once you get one, that opens the door to others, you just never know. And I think that's part of what makes this town so attractive. We don't have anything like that.
So we can s- sort of try to back into whether or not. This could be an economic venture or not. Do, do you, could you give us an idea of what is an acceptable height?
You know, three stories, that's fine with me. I, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, they have to do it.
The town board, yes, the town board has to, to okay the, the zoning change first. But if they do, when you came back, I would, I would feel very comfortable with three stories.
Yes.
What I would suggest is that if you're going to make that proposal. That you have elevations that would show for your. What the story, what the, what height you'd have for the number of stories that puts it in contact. Text with what exists there. And I think that, that's really key is, is going to be context and what's already existing. Um. And, and I, and I agree, I, that the last thing we want to do is to see empty stores. I think it's, it's. It's a good idea to have residential, it's just the scale you do it at, how you do it, what the courtyard is like. Where it faces, how it becomes a livable space. Um, how do you differentiate, rate your, differentiate yourself and have a good market relevant to? Um. Avalon, but it's, it, it, five stories just sounds, uh, like way too much.
So, uh, Ms. Cannon, if I may paraphrase what you said. And something that Bob said and Bruce said, uh. What you're concerned about is the height. Not the number of units.
It's, well, I, I think the two travel together, I think.
There's a correlation, yeah, exactly. Hundred, hundred and sixty units. In one area, whether they're three-bedroom or one-bedroom apartments is. It's, it's a lot, right? Whether you stack it in five stories or you, or you crunch it into three. It, it's still, it's still. A burden on. The town's resources. It's still a concern for sewer and water and traffic and parking. And aesthetics, I'll say that again, you know, it, it's, you gotta be real careful even with a three-story project. So, uh.
And it should be good livable space for the people who are going to be there. These are, the people who will live there will be our neighbors.
Yeah. And I hope, I hope they have windows.
And we, and we want them to have some green space they can see, you know, we want them to have a good place to live.
Are the buildings that you're showing on this, uh. Uh, the, the, the. See, the, uh, uh, the pictures there, are those, is that the, what, what these buildings might look like?
Um, actually, to be perfectly honest, uh. Uh, if I may call you Bruce, um.
Yeah.
This is, these are just representative images to show you the kind of feel. For example, the, uh, middle picture of the top layer is the interior courtyard. Uh, Nancy said, and Ricky, I, I, I think Nancy used, you talked about the green areas.
Yes.
The courtyard would be a green area.
Right.
That's, that's the outdoor space, it's an amenity. Uh, people can barbecue and go out there without having to feel that they're walking out onto the parking lot. Um, they, the look and feel of the building, you know, the height. Uh, uh, other than the height, you're looking at, uh, a contemporary. Look and feel rather than a traditional with pitched roofs that make the building look taller. That's the, that's the other purpose. We're looking to make this a bikeable community.
Yes, yes. It's near the bike path.
Yes, and that's exactly the point, and, and.
Yes, yes.
And, 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 and the beauty about, uh, fostering a bike culture means that you're getting less into your cars to. Go to the next property. And you're biking, so that, that makes use of amenities that already exist. Within the town of Somers. And of course, you know, like, uh, I think we all know, and we all see in the past two years now, uh. Funnyly enough, it's almost been two years. People decided to work from home. Or they've been forced to go to work three days out of the week. But they have to spend the rest two days working from home. And they need a space to, 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 to veg out. They need to be in their apartments and also use the co-share workspace in the community. That they can go do faxes and do emails and make copies, and they have to meet somebody. So this is a lifestyle. Project, and you talked about the quality of this development. Well, we are aiming to make this a Class A. Uh, top-of-the-line development, not a, uh, not something that you would wish you never approved.
The, uh, no, I'm, I'm looking at your two, your two drawings here and from an architectural. Viewpoint, uh. These do break up the, uh, facade quite a bit. The, the drawings that you're showing there, uh.
You mean on this page?
Which page are you on?
No, go to next page. That one.
Okay.
See, I, I mean, you know, it, that's, that's a lot different than, you know, uh, uh, an un, unad- undulating. Uh, five-story building with a one-dimensional facade. What you have there is a, uh, is, I, I'm an architect by training, so I'm, I'm compliment you on your. That, that the design of the two buildings we see here, or if it's the same building. Uh. But it, that does, that does help on breaking up the height of the building. But I think you're gonna have problems with the five-story as you hear from the other members of this board. Uh, especially Nancy, uh, the, uh. So.
But not on three stories.
I'm glad, uh, I'm, I'm glad you told us you're an architect because then I'll wash my words. I'll be careful about how I, and clearly what, and you're right, we're looking to make this a contextually fitting development.
Yes.
But it, 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 it's, it's not that's imposed, but it's, it blends in. And quite, quite obviously, we were concerned about a couple of other things. Since this is not sitting on the street. So this is not what you see, it's sitting way back into the property. That's the first thing that goes for this height. The second thing, of course, is we were concerned initially about. Can those single-family homes on the other side of the track? See them? And then we were, we were concerned about that, but then when we drew a section across this property, we noticed that they're so far and the trees in between. Uh, will. Prevent. Will save us. So, so these are not visible from any other place except, uh, from the campus and if you're driving on, on Route Six.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I, I think you want to. Come up with some kind of a visualization. Of what you are thinking about in term, because when you look at this, from my pers-. of what you are thinking about in term, because when you look at this from my perspective, and we're looking at that pa, page eight, right? And you're just looking at the gray box vacant. It's just bulk. It's a top down view that's bulk. The open areas underneath, there's no sense of the setback, the height, you, you want, I think, to have something that you can more, that the reader, that person's looking at can use to sort of visualize and think about scale, floor area ratio, height and all those things. And, and so I think as you bring it, and I hate to sound critical, as you bring this forth as a point of discussion, you're not doing yourself a hundred percent service by not, and I, I know you don't want to be tied down to something. If you show something, then maybe you're tied down to it. I get that you're in a, in a tough situation, but you might want to do something that at least gives the person looking at it a sense of bulk setback, et cetera. How it visually look on the, on, on, on the landscape. I, I think that would help you a lot. And just a question, and I know this is going to be too fine tuned for this, but I'm going to ask it anyway. On page eight, in the open area, there's two things that says monitoring wells. And I keep in my mind, coming back to the, the concept of the courtyard. Is the courtyard going to be, is it going to be like a cord building or is it going to be open at one end? Is, where is the intent? And if it is, on what side is the courtyard? Does it face front? Does it face in that open area side? Does it face toward, where, where? How were you envisioning it? Or have you just not gotten to that thought process yet? I'm just curious.
Um, although I am a licensed architect, I don't practice. So Bruce, I thank you for your comments. One, one of the things I can always say is that here, we haven't gone down to that level of thinking yet, Ms. Cannon. Um, but your points are well taken and very well, very highly appreciated. I think you gave us a way out, you know, if the three stories are on the sidewalk and the step back a little bit so that the bulk impact would be reduced. Maybe that's, that's a way to solve some of our problems. And one of the things that we will consider, we will, is to, uh, if we have to reduce the overall impact and yet keep the contextual fit intact, maybe there's a solution for that. Uh, because clearly, as we said in the beginning, we need a certain number of footfalls, number of people that live here to support this retail. And if we only had, say, one third of the unit count, it's meaningless. But we have to analyze this again. And I think what the next thing what we ought to do is get, get down to a more granular way of looking at this proposal. A straight line represents a straight line, but when you start to see the visuals as you saw in this image here, they start to undulate. Yeah. Yeah. So now, so we need to add more texture, more color, more flavor to what we are thinking. Now, obviously, this is just the first round of our interaction. We need to get something out there to show you what our intent is, but your points and your suggestions are well taken.
Yeah. Can I change, can I change gears for one, for, 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 for one minute? And, and if you guys addressed this in the beginning, I apologize. I was reviewing some of your paperwork just to answer a question I had in my own head. Did you guys explore the possibility of subdividing this as retail space and not go with this retail plan to smaller units where now you can lease to multiple tenants? Maybe disadvantaged businesses or, uh, you know, just startup businesses or even do some sort of like share space, office share space. I mean, we already have that in town, but it, it, it just, just as a different model than just jumping into which I do understand is an evolving model that is happening down county. But where we are already in a commercial space, this may be a better way for you to leverage this space as opposed to trying to erect a five story, uh, apartment complex.
I think they did in the concern with the shape like bowling alleys. I think they did, they did address that, yeah.
And, and you, again, you have four, four empty stores as it is. Uh, so providing it to small stores. What I would suggest, I mean, I know it's going to cost some money, but with computers today, you can do it pretty quickly. I would, I would suggest that your presentation to the town or even to us again, uh, have, have, have a, some kind of a, uh, perspective of the building in situ so that, uh, we can, that'll answer, uh, Vicky's situation of what this would look like. Uh, on, on site with some kind of an elevation. Obviously it doesn't have to be detailed, but it, it should so that we can, so that people can get an idea of how it's going to look in, in, in the place. And with computers today, you can do that fairly inexpensively. I know you don't want to put a lot of money into architectural drawings, but, uh, a facade, a bulk, uh, uh, understanding in, in, in connection with its surrounding, uh, commercial will give, will give everybody a better look at what we're talking about. Now, that's like.
A conceptual rendering.
Yeah, exactly. If I, I, I recall when the Bluestone Academy, Blue, Bluestone Peak Academy first presented to try to reoccupy the space in Pepsi, uh, they presented 3D renderings of the concept so that it really allowed us to understand what it is that you were trying, that they were trying to achieve as far as taking over that space and turning it from what it was into a school. I mean, this is, this is very similar in concept where you're taking now already zoned commercial space and turning it into a, a mixed residential. I think something more tangible for us to see for the, at the next step, and certainly for the town board would be helpful for you. And Mr. Biddle, you, you, you want us to be helpful, and I think that this is good advice. And, and it sounds unanimous that some 3D drawings and, and to Bruce's point, we understand it's expensive. Uh, but it looks like you guys have a, a big project that is, is going to be a big investment. So, um, it, it might, it might be advantageous if you did that.
Okay, we appreciate it. You know, the, the point of this whole hearing was to have an informal ability for us to give an informal presentation. And we appreciate all the feedback. You've given us exactly what we're looking for. So.
Yeah. And who you have to really deal with is the town board.
Yeah. You, you, you realize that you're obviously on, on, on a, a very tight edge here with, with the comments that have come so far. So I really would recommend, and to continue what I was saying before, that a rendering, uh, insight, uh, would help you sell your concept. Whether you keep it at five or bring it to four or three, uh, that's up to you with your economics. But, uh, you know, that if, I would, I would have that because you're going to be, you're going to be talking to a, a town board that has less experience at buildings than, than the planning department does. And, uh, if, if, if we think me, you need more presentation, the town board is definitely going to, you're going to need more presentation, but that's up to you.
Okay, we appreciate that. I think that probably is enough.
We've, I, I thank you and, um, I, I guess what will, next step obviously is you go to the town board and then depending on their decision, we'll be seeing you.
Yes.
Okay, we appreciate time and, and you're, all your service. I know that you're working late at night and it's not getting paid and it's tough, and we appreciate what you do for the town.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, last on our agenda tonight is discussion of the proposed zoning text amendments. Um, we all got the handout, uh, that was done, kind of started, but just for the record, it's a formal referral from the town board to amend the town of Somers zoning code to modify existing definitions of site coverage, building coverage, family and create, building coverage, family and create a new definition for the term structure and allow below grade or otherwise known as buried liquid propane tanks in the town's groundwater protection overlay district. Um, for the record, the town is going to have a, a public hearing, I believe it's tomorrow night at their meeting.
Yeah, their Zoom meeting also.
Yeah. So, um, I'll just throw it out if, if Dave or Steve want to make any comments or Joe even, or anybody actually.
Well, I think I can tell you comments on the propane tank, uh, of burials. So we just, uh, we just buried four 1,000 gallon tanks in Heritage. And, um, we made sure that we were outside the, uh, there's a stream that goes by, so we're outside of the, uh, hundred foot, uh, buffer zone. And, uh, the, the, the tanks were from, uh, Halsted Quinn. And the construction was done by the, the town highway department. And it went very smoothly and it, it had, had really no, no problems at all. Uh, they, they get, they sit in about six inches of sand and, uh, they're, uh, then covered with, uh, sand and then eventually they put earth. They go, they go down about, uh, five to six feet. And, uh, we, it was, it was a, it was like a two or three day, uh, job. That was it. And it, it went where we ran well. So I can't see having a problem with that. We also know we, we approved it for, uh, the Chico's too. Had their tanks in the ground. The other things I'm not, uh, versed at, families of family.
I think, I think Joe may, may chime in there. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could just give a brief summary. Sure. So, so, uh, part of this was led by members of the zoning board who had, um, applications going before them, uh, with respect to site coverage and building coverage. And they went back and they looked at the code. So that's why those proposed revisions are, uh, before you, that there was kind of a, a process that they, uh, went through. Um, and the, the, the backup documentation is included in your package, uh, which outlines, um, the specific recommendations. Bruce, the issue that you just talked about with respect to the, the burying of the liquid propane tanks, and Steve can attest to this, the building department, um, suggested that as a revision because the, essentially from, uh, the documentation that they provided, there's really no environmental impact. So if, in the event that, uh, there's a leak in the tank, uh, there's, there's really no environment effect. So the, the thought was, all right, to allow that type of use within the, the, uh, the overlay district. And then lastly, uh, you may have watched one of the recent, uh, town board meetings where there was this discussion about the definition of family and there's been some ongoing issues, uh, in town uh, with respect to renting of facilities. Um, and so the town is looking to, uh, better recognize that definition to, to his control. Uh, the, essentially the, the short term leasing of, uh, residences to people who may not be a, a full-time resident of, of town of Somers. So that, that provides kind of a, a brief outline. Yes, the town board has a public hearing tomorrow night, uh, on these matters. And, uh, to date, they've gotten comments back from Westchester County uh, with no substantive comments and then also New York City DDP had no substantive comments. And neither of whom objected to the town board actions in case.
Any other board member comments or Joe, do you have anything to say?
Well, the one thing that I'll say is, um, you know, as, as Dave described, most of the changes are driven by specific, um, I don't know if technical is the right word, but they are, you know, they are, they are construction and design, uh, you know, a, as well as Balkan area driven, um, proposed changes that come from, uh, what, what the ZBA is seeing on a regular basis and, and, and and as, as, uh, both Bruce and Dave have noted, um, this kind of design issues that, that seem to make some sense from the perspective of those who propose those. The one that I'll comment on primarily is the family definition. The difference, there are two, two things that are going on there that are relevant. And, and you know, it's not for me really, y, y, you can all have y, your own take on it. I'll just tell you what the legal significance is. One is, as Dave did comment on, um, it does talk about, um, is, is certain, uh, I'm just trying to get it on my, my own screen here. And of course I just lost it. Hang on. There we go. Um. One aspect of it is to update i, in, in more modern language, which I've seen in, in many municipalities when this issue comes up. The primary difference you'll notice probably is that in defining family, the blood relationship between members is, i, i, by blood or marriage, um, is proposed to be taken out so that it's, it's really any number of individuals living together as a family, i, is the best way to describe it, uh, as one single housekeeping unit. I, is, is the term that's used there. And, and that really comes out of a long developing, uh, string of case law on the federal and state level that talks about, uh, it being unfair to, uh, use such terms as the only way to define families. So that, that's one aspect of the change. The other aspect is the last bit of it, which is about, um, distinguishing that from a group, uh, that's up, that's, um, in a boarding room or boarding house or rental of short term or long term basis. So, so it, it's a bit convoluted, but when you drop the blood relation and marriage relationship out of the family definition, you then run into opening the door to these daily and short term rentals, and, and let's just call it what it is. This is the Airbnb issue, um, being defined that way as well. And so this is an additional distinction that says, except that if you're renting on the short term, that's not, that's not going to count as a family, um, unit. So that's, that's, it's, it's, it's a much longer explanation than the change actually i, itself. But, but that's what the genesis of that is from a legal perspective.
My guess is that some Thanksgivings, there's people would argue the difference too.
That's right. You know, you're right about that. Yeah.
There is also, there is also the, uh, the, uh, it makes it easier for communal living.
That's right.
Well, it also.
That has dangers.
Yeah.
But it rec, I think one of the things it does, and we just changed it in Heritage Hills, was that it recognizes, uh, partners living together, uh, people who aren't married, uh, but who have been, you know, living together for the last 15 years, that, that, that is, should be considered a, a family unit. Uh, so that, that I think is, is a, a tendency that's occurring in our society totally that there's a lot, lot of, lot more people living together and not getting married, which, which.
You're talking two people or three people, not six or eight or 10.
No, no, yeah, no, no, no. The, the idea of the short term, I mean, again, we, we here in Heritage have, most of the places have determined that the, the length of any lease has to be at least a year. Nothing short of that, which eliminates your, uh, which eliminates your Airbnb, uh, uh, qualifications. So, so, uh, I think that's what this is sort of aiming at. And I think it's, it's just recognizing the change in our society.
Any other comments? No, then, um, um, nobody has anything else, so I'll, I'll make a motion that we adjourn and remind everyone our next meeting is February ninth, I'm assuming. I'm guessing we'll probably still be Zooming, but who knows?
Who knows?
Who knows?
Good meeting, guys. Good meeting.
Thank you. Second, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Happy new year, everyone. Stay safe.
Happy new year.